Business attire, cash bar. But on the second page is for an advertisement. We're asking businesses or council people or candidates if you would like to put in a business card, a quarter page, half page, full page. You can do so for our souvenir brochure. And that has to be turned in by the 8th of October. And the prices are listed on the page. You can call myself or you can call Darling Crew if you want to place an ad in the brochure. Okay?
Anything else?
Just a reminder that next week is the KCABD Domestic Violence Purple Purse Challenge Luncheon, which is going to be held at my Kentucky home. And it will have the emcee from Way TV3, Don G. And it will have a program. There will be food served. You can go online or you can contact me in reference to the luncheon and hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Any other council members have anything to bring up?
Okay. On the mayor's report, I just need to report the Rotary Club postponed their Kids Day due to the weather a week or so ago. So it's been rescheduled for October the 18th. It's Thursday here on the front lawn of City Hall. So just want to make that announcement. And then something else that's come up, it really doesn't require council approval, so to speak, but I want to bring it before you. I've had a number of requests from people in the Edgewood area, particularly the Edgewood area where it intersects with Rosewood. They are saying the speed of the traffic in that area is pretty dangerous for, you know, a lot of schoolchildren walking down through there. A lot of schoolchildren live down that way. If you know up the next block where Edgewood and Dogland intersects, it's a three-way stop. And of course, if you go over parallel to that, over Payne and South Fourth is a three-way stop. And where Third Street intersects with Guilty Run is a three-way stop. Guthrie Drive and Honeysuckle, all three-way stops. So it's fairly common that we have these three-way stops around town. So they have asked if people would consider doing a three-way stop there at Rosewood and Edgewood, the first entrance to Rosewood, if you enter into the Edgewood subdivision. So I spoke with Ben Bird and Larry Hamilton today. Jessica is out on vacation. They didn't see the problem. Larry just went on to say that over the years, we have had requests and complaints from that area about the speed and talking to them, putting a speed limit sign or Children of Play sign up, which we don't put the Children of Play sign up. So I've heard from probably five or six residents right there on the Edgewood. And actually one on Rosewood, because as they come off of Rosewood wanting to turn left, the speed of the traffic is dangerous for them as well. So if y'all don't have anything, a problem with that. Ben said it's not a big issue. But up there, we might, might need to park the police car there early on so the people know that there's going to be a stop sign there. We don't want them just going to work one morning and then coming back that afternoon and running it. So unless anybody has any objection to that, I think people down there would really appreciate that.
I don't have an objection to it. But I, I wanted to add that also the complaints for South Fourth coming off that hill from Heaven Hill, they come down, they fly through that, fly through the stop sign. That's also a problem area and it has not been corrected. Someone flew through the stop sign and my car was parked outside of a house and they almost hit me. So that has not been fixed and we need something down there as well, some kind of monitor or a sign or something because they're just, they're not even paying attention to the stop signs. At first, it was all the, the trees and things like that that was blocking the view of the stop sign. And now that's, there's no excuse for that because it's been mowed and maintained.
We may have to ask the police to set up down there a little bit.
Some of those neighbors in Edgewood, they volunteered to say the police could park in my driveway anytime while South Intersections.
Well, they did once, had a guilty run though in Third and Guilty Run. I know one day I was out and one of the police officers was there and they got a bunch of tickets. They took quite a few. But that's on Third and Guilty Run, Third, with Third and Fourth. But they had a field day down there that day.
So, Mr. Mayor, coming down, you know, I used to live in Edgewood, so I'm familiar with that curve there where Dr. Harris' building lives. That stop sign coming down that hill, I can see a little bit of a situation there.
We talked about that. We talked about that and I drove back down there again this afternoon. If you're not going 40 or 45 miles an hour, you should be able to see it, play a time to stop. And probably the most amount of traffic down there is residents or their family members. And over time, they should, should pretty much know it's there. And that's why we want to announce it in a public meeting so that they know it's coming and it'll be there.
They can always augment it also with a "Prepare to Stop." And I know what you're saying, if you're going by Dr. Harris and heading down that hill, you know, they can always augment that with a "Prepare to Stop" sign too, you know, so letting people know it's coming.
Yeah, I rode down there just before I came up here. We talked about that this morning, but I, they don't think, the public works and engineers don't think it's up.
It's not.
Okay? Anything else on that? I think, I think you all heard, we got a couple of problem spots we need to look at going forward. We have a special guest, but he's next on the, next on the agenda.
She was shown.
She's disappeared. So Chief, Matt Leiter, wants to give us a update on that.
Yes, sir. Sorry, any messages? Several of you have either emailed me or questioned, you know, hey, we have a signal that says she was first brought on the department. How big has she gotten? So she's got a pretty good size. She was six months old yesterday. She has completed her first set of trainees. She'll have another one in about six months. We're staying very busy with her. Part about three activities a week that we have to vote for. October is fire convention month, so we're really with her on this. Jill, here's one of our handlers. She's going to demonstrate. We teach the kids stop, drop and roll. I had one class, I said, "What do you do if your clothes catch on fire?" And they said, "Take your clothes off, jump in the swimming pool." I mean, every type of answer there was. But Oriole showed them stop, drop and roll. And the time we left that class, every one of those kids were doing it and knew the singing of it. So we're going to demonstrate stop, drop and roll, hopefully here.
Stop, drop, roll.
Say it again.
Stop.
When we go out to activities with her, she has a vest on, has her Barstown Department ID on her. She is a totally different dog when she puts that vest on. She knows it's time to go to work. Once she's done, we take that vest off, she's back to a six-month-old puppy. So she doesn't have her vest on at night and stuff. We just want to let you know what's going on with her and let y'all see her since everybody's asking about her.
She's gone a long way.
She has. She's rolling. She's rolling a bit. She's rolling a bit.
Paul.
What is that?
Aw.
She knows when to go in.
Roll.
Yes.
No, roll.
If anybody has an activity coming up that you want to add, just let us know. I do have you on the board for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
We have two requests for Main Street. Randy Mouser is here with us for Main Street. Randy, would you like to talk to us, I guess, first on the agenda is Halloween's spectacular request for road closing? And then the next one is the light up Barstown request?
Right. And the difference that we were doing this year, or we're trying to get approved this year for the Halloween spectacular is I was trying to, for the safety of the children, because we do bring probably up to a thousand kids, plus you think one or two parents each that come with each child downtown for trick-or-treating. And it usually starts after school, which is around 3:30, which is why I put in the proposal for doing a 2 o'clock road closure because it takes time for us to get the streets closed from the, the traffic that's currently parked there. So for the safety of the children was the whole purpose of why I wanted to try to get the road closed for the kids that will be coming for the trick-or-treating on the 26th.
And then staying closed for nine?
The reason that we were doing that, which we can change that if, if you all still, you know, see fit to do so, but we take all the children after they do their trick-or-treating to the farmer's market. And then they have games and then we do a movie that starts at 6:00. And then typically that would be over around 8:00. And so for them to get back to their vehicles in time would be about 9:00.
Randy, I've been sort of calling about the issue of closing down West Flagee and East Flagee down from Third to, to the alleyways on the side.
Right.
Of course, you know, Friday afternoon, the banks open at 6:00 and they have an issue with, you know, people getting in and out by the door.
Well, I did talk to Radco and St. Bats on the country bank. And I did let them know that we wouldn't be closing the part where the people could get into like their drive-through until after hours. So that would be on East Flagee, right across from the farmer's market. So that would eliminate that issue as far as like a business.
On the east, on East Flagee?
Mm-hmm.
What about West Flagee?
West Flagee would only go up to the parking lot.
To the parking lot.
So people could still get in and out no problem through there. Basically just like we do for the street concert. It'd be the same closure.
I've been here for the second blocks. And I did hear from some people on the first block, Third Street, and also from the banks on the, on the East Flagee. East Flagee, I heard pretty much they didn't want it closed at all. And I heard from merchants on Third Street concerned, you know, traffic from 3:00 in the afternoon on most days is really tough on Third Street.
Right.
Friday is probably the worst day of the week. And to close that down, I mean, I'm right for the safety of the children and so forth, but I'm just envisioning from feedback I've gotten and just my own experience, that closing that two blocks down at that time of day on Friday is going to create a major problem.
Right.
So that's been the feedback I've gotten from merchants that I've talked to.
Would there be an option, if we couldn't get the road closed, to maybe have like police personnel there to escort traffic, like going across the center of Main Street for the kids for that person? So we still have that safety standpoint, but yet we still keep the roads open.
You mean, as they walk, say, from crossing from the west side of Third Street to the east side of Third Street at Flagee and Third and that area?
Plus, I think the kids would like it and like to have them there.
Anytime we've ever done especially events, it balances the needs of the organizer with the stakeholders or the citizens that go up and down Third Street, especially on a Friday afternoon. A couple of things that we would suggest is to have personnel staffing the intersections on Third Street. That way the kids or whoever can get back will safely cross the street. Put signages and block up, but you can get the viewable messaging boards to say, there's a, to notify the drivers, hey, there's an event up here, watch out for this. If you get the viewable message boards that are lit up, the bigger ones, people see that more than just a standard sign.
Does that come from the state? Like do you just go back to saying, oh, we're near the wrong way on Third, so maybe one and maybe use the less senior officer possible in the world?
Yes, sir. So we used to rent them from Highway Safety Services, but it's accounting. I know the state has them and we could probably partner with them to get some of those out there. They run about 150 a week for one of them. So we used to just rent them because we used so many of them. But, and it, so you use the media outreach, you use the signage, you can put the people in place. Firstly, I don't think Third Street would need to be shut down if you put those resources and interventions in place right there. And then boil down to resources for us. Do we have, you know, four or five officers to be able to dedicate, for that timeframe all day long to be able to do that? I'm not sure that we do.
I think you and I talked about possibly at least having maybe one cruiser parked at the intersection of Flagee and Third, just like one of the, one of the, on the east side or the west side with lights on. It would be another visual thing to keep traffic. Of course, traffic's not going to be moving very fast. I'll tell you, traffic doesn't hardly move more than three miles an hour through there. So I don't think the safety is going to be an issue with speed, it's just the number of cars.
And if you create a domino, if you do shut that down, you're going to create a tremendous domino effect. You put about 130 cars a mile of traffic. So if you shut that section down at the nerve center of Barstown from Louisville getting south to everything, it is going to create a domino effect. Because you won't just have to shut Third Street, you're going to have to do a piece of Stephen Foster to make all of that work right. Then it's going to, the domino at the Third, Fourth, Fourth Street, Fifth Street on all the fifth streets are already going to be problematic because it naturally is. You're just going to create a lot more issues that are to be dealt with where you can probably do some things with a couple thousand people, with some treatments of people on the street, signage and getting the, getting the word out through the media.
You know, school could have a third block that's always conditioned down on.
Right.
Put it down to the Flagee, you know, it's a nice close. You're talking about having everybody go down to the farmer's market for the movies or whatever and maybe, you know, at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock or something, I don't know, it probably just closes off. Flagee, if you get a whole lot of overflow from the farmer's market out on the street, like the craft beer festival, I mean, it's closed down to that, but it's asset hours.
Yeah, you could probably close East Flagee to that half-block area, which is what they do for the beer festival. I think you could probably do that.
After, you know, during that movie time or, you know, when everybody's moving down there, I, you know, I think that would probably work.
After 6:00.
After, as long as after 6:00 o'clock. When's the beer festival closing down? About September 7th, I don't know.
That takes a while, which is on Saturday.
It's on Saturday, yeah. Friday's, the banks open during. Banks close till noon, noon and then down. Yeah, but you, that's not what happened, you said till 8:00 or 7:30 or 8:00?
The movie starts at 6:00. So from about 6:00 to 8:00 and then everybody goes there.
Randy, would you be okay if we didn't take an official position as far as the closure tonight and let you all have some more dialogue with Assistant Chief Seeley? And see if, and you talked about what volunteers you might be able to provide?
Sure.
I mean, we want to be helpful, but I think we also want to make sure it doesn't create a boondoggle.
Right. Absolutely.
I know some of them get cursed.
We've got a little more time. We've got some time since this late in the month, the 26th, right?
26.
So probably, if you're all okay with that, let's maybe go with it this way and see if we can work out some few more.
Can I get what you all want? Perfect.
Okay. The next one might not be as problematic.
Randy, do you all, do we do anything for the private parking lots there too? That was another question that came up with people going in like parking in a bank or parking in these businesses that are open. Do you, do you have any way to monitor? Do y'all do anything to help prevent that?
I mean, there's usually signs that say no parking if you're not part of it, but there's really no prevention of it.
Just be their own sign.
Well, I know Town and Country Nights, they were already going to have to hire security anyway, just because even if you didn't close.
Right.
East Flagee, they got to hire security to just keep the parents or partner there.
Right.
To bring their children.
I mean, I can always.
They're okay with that. I think they're cool with that. They just said restricted flow of traffic on the east and west is a problematic force.
Randy, what, what kind of issue will that present for the people that, you know, live in apartment complexes and so forth in that area?
They all have restricted parking anyway, so there shouldn't be a problem. They all have their assigned registered parking.
They live in the back?
Yeah. So it shouldn't be a problem. Now, people park there when they're not supposed to, there's nothing I can do about it, but unfortunately.
Some do, some don't. There's some in East Flagee that don't have to sign parking, so the parks on that. And I think on West Flagee as well.
I know the ones that are like behind, like near the farmer's market, they do have. And the ones that are on the other side of Flagee, like behind the tap house and stuff like, they are all marked. Yeah.
Doesn't do much good, but they're marked.
Right. Exactly. I mean, I can't permit people parking there, but there is a sign.
It's Halloween, it's going to be wide open, so.
It is. Yeah, and it's like that every year.
So we'll work with you, but I think we need to come up with a compromise here.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. Anything else from the council end of questions on this particular bit? The next one is the light up Barstown. Do you want to kind of go through that? That's, we have been doing this for a few years, so.
Yeah, nothing's going to change as far as what we've done in the previous years. The street will close from 5:00 to 8:00. The first block only. You won't have anything to do with the second block. And then West Flagee, because the fire truck will come down West Flagee, down through the first block. But we will also have to make sure that half of the circle are barricaded because the people will be walking up to Port Square. So nothing's changed on that one. It's the same way as it's been every year.
I don't think, the map wasn't attached, I don't think on the iPad, but I think we were familiar with that one. Is there any other questions of Randy on that one? That I would, I guess, ask for motion then to approve the request for Main Street for the light up Barstown street closures.
Someone?
Motion of Councilwoman Doherty. We have a second.
Second.
Second of Councilwoman Doherty. Any other discussion? All in favor of seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
All hopes? Motion carried. Let's go real quick if you don't mind. Let's wait to, the amendment to the sidewalks, I'm going to get Jan catch her breath real quick. Go with, let's go to the Classification and Compensation Plan, B-2018 regarding the School Resource Officer. I know we have some out of town media, but I think that you all have gotten most of your individuals done. Because most of the discussions last week, as we introduced the change to the classification plan, just the addition of one more officer.
You mean, they're not hearing to hear me read this?
I'll do, oh, that's what I need to do.
Ordinance B-2018-21, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended and ordinance styled and ordinance creating Classification and Compensation Plan. This ordinance amends Ordinance B-2018-17 and Chapter 35 employment policies, the Classification Plan and Compensation Plan in municipal code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade and setting ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2018-19 and subsequent years. The amendments in additions reflecting the number of positions, title and pay grade respectively are: Police Department, number of positions, strike, 17, add, 18; Title, Police Officer, Grade, 109. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full course and effect following publication and summary as required by law.
Thank you, Tim. And I would ask for a motion to approve B-2018-21 as it relates to the Compensation and Classification Plan.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? This is a second, this is an individual votes. So all those in favor would signify by saying aye. I'll start with Councilwoman Doherty.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Chief and Assistant Chief are on the lookout now for this resource officer. We're excited to have them join our force as well as assisting with our Barstown and school systems. Good job by everybody on getting this moving forward. Okay, thank you. Last thing that's on our agenda for this evening is the Planning to Zoning Subdivision Regulations Amendment to Section 4.6 Sidewalks. This has really come to our attention and a need for this for two reasons. Number one, when we applied for the grant for the extension of the sidewalks on 245 from 62 over to roughly Crowers, part of the stipulation of that grant is that the city would promote connectivity to that, to our sidewalks. So that was one of the first things that came up. In the past, we had an automatic waiver because we didn't have anything to connect to, you know, for the most part along those lines. So now that we will be having sidewalks, particularly on 245 corridor, it just makes sense now that we consider changing the waiver from just going away from an automatic waiver to giving people direction to connect where it's practical. You know, it doesn't mean that you would not have the ability to request a waiver where it might make sense. Meaning like a, say a residential subdivision that had to have deep ditches, you know, for drains and that sort of thing, large lots, so forth. That would still probably be practical to request a waiver. But particularly in this commercial corridor is what we're really focusing on, I think, this evening. So I know Tim and Jan might want to add to what I've just said, but.
Well, I can provide a little bit of history about this, Mayor, because this section, I think, dates back to probably the mid 1990s when there was a major rewrite to the subdivision regulations. And I can recall, there was a committee that did this, that was city and county engineering people, myself and some of the development community, Health Department, just people that were involved in the process. And, and this will tell you the change in, in how, you know, people, their lifestyles, I guess. But when this was done, the 100-foot waiver was first done in terms of residential because there was some thought that out in the county on higher, lower density lots, that you wouldn't need sidewalks, that, you know, there's just not a need for it. 100-foot lots are typically were at the time, maybe not as much now, but at the time were considered non-sewered lots, septic system lots. Your ones that were on sewer were typically 75 feet in width. So what it basically did is said sewered lots, sidewalks, non-sewered lots, no sidewalks. And then in terms of commercial, the thought was you just don't have people walking around in commercial developments. Just don't have it. And now you see it regularly. As a matter of fact, I know we, we had a tragic accident out on 245 just the other evening, somebody walking down the road. And so you have people, like in, in, in the development over off of Chambers, you have people that are staying in the hotel and want to go to Taco Bell. They have to walk in the road. And you just wouldn't, you know, back then, you just didn't really think about it too much. Now you think about it all the time. It's a, it's a relatively common thing. People are more likely to ride a bike or walk than they ever were back in that, in that time. So I think this is, I think that, and I'll let Jan weigh in, but I think that the, the times have changed to where you're correct, that, that the presumption should, should be not that it's waived completely, but the presumption that it is waived only when, you know, there are extenuating circumstances. And we are new development, and I know Travis can tell you, that we have new development where you say this makes sense to connect with sidewalks. It makes sense that you would want to connect this with sidewalks. It makes sense that you would want to connect along 245 with the multipurpose pad. But we can't require them to do it because most of those lots, almost every commercial lot is over 100 foot. So basically what you're saying is no commercial development would have to do sidewalks.
And also back to that point, you know, from the city standpoint, as we, as we reached outside the city, you know, the outer edges of the city, we, we didn't have connectivity. Stephen Foster didn't have sidewalks. Way out north, Third Street didn't have sidewalks. Templin didn't have sidewalks. We've added quite a few sidewalks, even within the older sections of town now, up in Hemington, Maple Hill areas, have had sidewalks added since that time period. And we've continued to work on sidewalks. So we're a lot more connected than we were back when this was. So, we're a lot more connected than we were back when this was put in place, so. Jan, do you think?
Well, we, you know, we have subdivision regulations that's dealing with subdividing property and when the streets are being put in, and that's one issue. Then we also have the design standards ordinance where we're dealing on the back end when the actual commercial establishment's being developed. The commercial establishment's design standards ordinance has a provision to require sidewalks, but these sidewalks need to be put in when the streets are in. And that's when we're getting behind the curve, is when, at the subdivision, especially with the one that we're dealing with off of two forty-five, you know, they're designing the roadway and the lots over a hundred. Everything that comes in now is over a hundred. It's a hundred and above. Nobody's wanting to put in sidewalks anywhere in the county with that automatic waiver. So we could actually require the sidewalk at the time that the development goes in, but that's not the time to do it. Especially if you're wanting connectivity, because some lots might not be developed for one or two years. So the concern is when we do that, and at the subdivision regulations, when they're plating is at the time, and then with the design standards ordinance, we can catch those other lots as they come in that haven't been developed and need a sidewalk, we can do that. So, that's where we are, is trying to get that waiver. I think the planning commission, we've had a couple of subdivisions that have come in that the planning commission would really, they're in an urban area, there's an area, you know, there's a place to connect on, and the planning commission, I think, has been wanting to see this. The question is, you know, right now, is just having that amended just for the city of Barstown at this point, and then at some point, we look at that entire county as a whole, and I think base it on a comprehensive plan later. But right now, just trying to get it for commercial only, or look at residential. I think there's several different ways we can write the amendment, so. And the amendment would only require a planning commission public hearing, one public hearing, and then that final action by the planning commission.
Right, then, that's what I was gonna say, is that this is a case of where the planning commission typically would want a request like this to originate with the council. But what you would be asking is for them to consider language like this, and then the actual approval of subdivision regulations is final upon approval by the planning commission, by state law. So, it would not come back to you all. We would actually be asking them to consider it and then approve it.
So if we were to, just, because tonight, we were just talking about changing from the automatic waiver, just changing that to whether it's not an automatic, they still can request a waiver.
They can still request a waiver. Under the subdivision regulations, there's a bare chance it's allowed if they have some geographical constraint or some other reason, then they can always come back and ask for a waiver from the planning commission during the plating stage, and then we will obviously come back to Jessica or Travis and get their opinion on that waiver before we act.
That's what I'm looking at, is if this chicken or egg type thing, is it better for us to do the waiver, eliminate the automatic waiver now, and that you all take it from there and do something else with the subdivision regs?
Well, that's what I'm here for, is to get direction, I mean, we can change it in the subdivision regulations with some public hearing. I mean, so we just need direction from you all as to what you want, how you want that amendment to read. And then Travis said, you know, the mayor and I talked this afternoon about curb and gutter. It's an automatic waiver for curb and gutter, too. So if you're just looking at the curb and gutter, or you're just looking at sidewalks, or?
The existing subdivisions, would they, would they be grandfathered in?
Yes.
Yeah, subdivision regulations only apply when you're subdividing the land. And once the land's subdivided, those regulations no longer apply.
And that's where the design standards ordinance would pick up for any commercial building.
Hopefully commercial, even if a commercial's been planted and subdivided, design stage would catch those, but not the residential.
That's right.
Like, for example, the commercial. Can you give, where would that apply?
The commercial?
Yeah.
Um, we have several developments out along two forty-five now. Main Street would be one of them, as well as there's Dexter Corvins, the Marvin Downs property, Creepy, off of Creepy Court, say, you could ride along the street. That's currently being considered. And so all those have connection to that multi-use path. And without that, right now, they're plating, you know, proposing over a hundred foot wide, which means that automatic waiver would apply. And then, I mean, we could get, you know, have the sidewalks put in place with the design standards ordinance, but you're looking at parcel by parcel rather than requiring it to be planted.
There's a lot, the reason it's come up is there's a lot of interest proposals for hotel development.
We have a hotel war right now.
Yeah, and the hotels, you see a hotel going in at various places along highway two forty-five, both ends, and they're relatively close to restaurants, which, you know, go figure. But they can't get there without walking through the street, or, you know, and it just, so, what you say is, instead of, you know, there's no possibility of getting sidewalks unless they voluntarily do it, and then it's only on their property. Or, you say, we're gonna require it all the time unless you get a waiver. And so that's, you're just flip-flopping it, where it's automatic all the time as opposed to now you have to ask and have a good reason not to, as opposed to assume that there's a reason not to.
Are any hotels within, proposed hotels within city limits?
All of them.
All of them? The money property is in the city.
Three houses on. There's three or four on the table.
There's four, there's four.
We'll bring it back today, man.
So Jan, would the waiver application first go through planning and zoning, and then it's approved on your end of it, and then it would come to council if it's in city limits?
No, what we would do is, when, if they requested a waiver with the plat, we have a subdivision review committee, which Jessica and Travis sit on. And so if that waiver comes in, then we would obviously get the approval through the engineers before we would even proceed with it.
But it's a hundred percent decision of the planning commission, we don't have any veto or say in whatsoever.
And that's based on your opinions as to the density of the area and what type of foot traffic there's likely to be?
Right. I mean, if a plat comes in, I mean, that's not my expertise, so that's why we have the subdivision review committee that reviews plats. We distribute the plats to all the agencies and utilities. So for anything, if the planning commission makes city decisions on it, then we get their approval first.
Actually, nothing's soft to say from weighing in on that hearing stage.
No.
Any other questions for Jan or Tim or Travis?
I have a question for Travis. On the sidewalks without curb and gutter, is that gonna be an issue with the ditch, having a ditch? Or do they kinda go hand in hand?
They kinda go hand in hand, but I know that one of the ones we're looking at right now is kinda almost unique, where we would, no. We'd kinda work with them, because we don't think it's gonna work on both sides, so we may plan a waiver for partial curb and gutter type deals. I mean, that's something, too, if you can't get it to work with a full subdivision, I mean, it would work where you start at curb and gutter and tie it in state boxes, and then go to ditch section after that. They kinda go hand in hand, but I think it'd be good to have them request a waiver in those situations.
But are you saying that we ask for the, eliminate the waiver on the curb and gutter, too?
Yeah.
Well, that's not, that's not part of this, this, we've not, it's not on the agenda tonight, but, and just so that y'all are aware, curb and gutter eliminates, you know, when you start talking about the lot, the lot is flat from the curb back, because the drainage is under, is in ground, as opposed to ditch, which has got the swale, you know, it goes down and up. It's very difficult, or can be difficult, to accommodate a sidewalk in that right of way with that ditch. It can, it, it, just, and then if the ditch is steep, you got the possibility of people falling in the ditch.
Chambers Boulevard is a good example of that.
Right, cool. If you got plenty of right of way, it's no problem, but when you're tight and you got rock in the way and all that, it's, curb and gutter is a lot better scenario. You get the sidewalk in, and like I'm talking about, you can always, if they wanna give you more right of way, you can go to a ditch section and have the sidewalk further back. Kinda like what we did on, we extended Ben Frye over summer, that's a ditch section there, and we just had the sidewalk a little bit further off the street, because we have enough right of way there.
My concern is that everybody asks for a waiver due to the ditch scenario. So that would be my concern, is that.
Well, and that's where I think that the next step is gonna probably be Travis and Jessica looking at curb and gutter, and see whether that automatic waiver, which is a hundred foot also, whether that needs to be done away with. But that is, it's a separate issue, and it's a little more complex from an engineering standpoint.
It was a little bit of hand in hand with the sidewalk.
Yeah, it, like Jan said, that you're gonna have people that are coming in and gonna say, well, with the ditch, we can't do it, and I would suggest saying, then do curb and gutter, you know, as opposed to just an automatic waiver. I mean.
Well, and when there's new streets involved, there is a trade-off, I think, as far as the width of the street. If you put curb and gutter in, you get to reduce the width of your street by two feet and that.
Right.
So there's a trade-off there from a cost standpoint. You add the curb and gutter, then you get to reduce the width of your street, so that's, there's an offset, not, doesn't necessarily mean there's always a one-to-one offset in terms of cost, but it's incentive. It looks better and it works better, really.
So I just need, you know, are we gonna go with the sidewalks, and we can write it up, just as?
I think the sidewalks is on for tonight, and I would suggest that Jessica and Travis get together and decide whether that's, you know, so you may have at some point a request from engineering to do something similar, request the planning commission to do something similar with curbs and gutters. I don't know that it's, I don't know that they've fully discussed that. I'd hate to say for you all to say, yeah, do that, and without Travis and Jessica fully discussing that out.
You're comfortable with us eliminating the waiver tonight, because as far as the automatic waiver, it doesn't mean the waiver won't ever be granted, but they have that option, which is now it's going away automatically. I think we've addressed the changes that happen within the city limits. As far as connectivity, it's now more practical to eliminate the waiver, because we are, have areas now that are more connected with sidewalks. And people want access to a lot of these commercial properties by foot, in a safe manner, instead of walking down ditch lines and grass and so forth.
Are you getting negative feedback from any developers over not having that waiver?
I mean, this is the first that it will.
First public knowledge of it.
Tim, this also says that a hundred feet of road, unless the roadway is located within the corporate city limits of the city of Barstown. So what is, what is the limit when it's within the corporate city limits? What, how does that change from the hundred foot?
Well, what it says, there's an automatic waiver granted for roadways unless the roadway is located within the corporate city limits of Barstown. So, right now, it says there's an automatic waiver if you got a hundred feet of road range, period.
Period.
Anywhere. And this would change it to unless it's located within the corporate limits of Barstown, which means that automatic waiver would be taken off of the table.
So that's the, that waiver, that means the rest of it is above, that means the rest of the criteria.
So that's the.
If it costs too much, and, you know, we don't wanna spend money, they have to show that these items are on this regulation, so.
So they just would take it for an automatic.
And in terms of input, Councilman Buckland, the planning commission, that's why they have a hearing, you know, and they probably will hear from a few people that are disgruntled, not very many that are gruntled, but a few disgruntled people.
The county of Barstown.
And, yeah, don't blame the city council, that's why it's before you all tonight to make your, ask them to hold a hearing and consider that. And that's what, by the way, the action that you all would take tonight would be to recommend that the planning commission consider an amendment as is shown here to the subdivision regulations, and then they take it from there. They have a hearing, they would approve or not approve that request.
That's your hearing. You transcribe it and then have the voter nominate another hearing like you did.
Um, well, we're gonna hold the hearing, so, so anyway, now the vote, the same night is locked in, or if you feel comfortable.
Should I send email when hearings are released?
I can.
What really is the profit of this discussion beginning with was the grant, the language of the grant, and this, now that the highway two forty-five corridor is going to be, have sidewalks available. You know, years past, it just didn't make sense to force them to do it, because there wasn't anything to connect to. Today, we do have that. That's where I see more of the issue than anything at this point. Hotels, restaurants, stores, commercial stores, a lot of pedestrian fat traffic want access to those.
Just a lot more. Come back here later and put it in that city expense, and try to work around all the stuff like this other sidewalk we're doing, there's a lot of obstacles that they're working on around the, might get it in there somehow.
Any other questions, Jan or Tim, on this? And I would ask if you would like to make a motion to approve the amendment?
Well, again, ask them to, does it consider an amendment?
Because that's what we're asking, to plan it or to consider it.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Dohms. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, period. Thank you, Jan, for taking the time. I know you left one day and you come to another meeting.
It's in all of six minutes.
I appreciate your time here, because this took a long time. I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda, anyone else, anything to bring forward to council this evening?
If anybody would like to stay for a record meeting, you're welcome.
Senator Louie, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Send one.
Motion by Councilwoman Copeland, the second by Councilwoman Shekels. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, period. Thank you.